We're good.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Farmington School Board meeting for Monday, February 22nd. Before we get started, I have a brief statement to read. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, this meeting of the Farmington School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D dot zero twenty-one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. All right, first I'm going to call this meeting to order. We will begin with a roll call. Member Christensen?
Here.
Member Carraro?
Here.
Member Doyle?
Here.
Member Coletta? Member Coletta? Member Simmons?
Here.
Chair Saucer?
Here.
All right, everyone is here. The next item of business is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Member Carraro, second by Member Christensen. Roll call vote. Member Christensen?
Approved, yes.
Member Carraro?
Yes.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Chair Saucer? Yes. Motion passes. We have an agenda. Next item of business is good news and superintendent update with Superintendent Berg. Go ahead.
Thank you Chair Saucer, members of the board and the community. So another exciting week here in Farmington area schools and it's super exciting because February 22nd through the 26th is School Board Recognition Week. And so just an opportunity for us in the district and myself to say thank you for all the work that the school board has done, you know, I mean, on a daily basis, obviously to support our learners, but especially over the last year. The amount of things that we've had to wrestle with, the school board has had to wrestle with, the amount of things that have changed in guidance, all those sorts of things. And the leadership that the board has displayed through this time, the questions that have been asked to help guide us and help, you know, take our thinking deeper as we've put our plans and stuff together has been essential for us. I think making the best out of a really, really tough situation. So just want to say thank you to each and every board member for all the support and help that you give us on a, again, a daily basis, but really over this last year to make things go in a direction that they've gone. So just thank you and we appreciate your work and look forward to getting back to a little bit more normal kind of work the board's going to do hopefully over the next year. But again, thank you very much. Today was the first time that we've had all of our learners back in our building, either in person or a hybrid model. So our cohort one, 11th and 12th graders joined us today. So technically not all of them, but we're getting closer. It's on the schedule. But the first time since November 18th, hard to believe that, you know, it's been two and a half, three months since we've had all of our learners back in our building on a full schedule. So it was excited to see our high school buses a little fuller than they were last week. I remember when I watched the first bus roll in for our ninth and 10th graders and two learners hopped off the bus for that. They were much fuller this time, which is a good thing. So it was excited to see their faces here, a little bit more volume in the hallway here at the high school as we've reintroduced our 11th and 12th graders back in the building. Like we've been able to do, we've been able to celebrate a lot of our activities, even though up until, you know, a couple of weeks ago in our secondary, we haven't had learners in the building, but our activity has still been going on. And our BPA had an awesome, awesome, you know, regional meet that got them ready for the state tournament. So I just want to share some names of our, of our learners that are going to be heading to the state meet beginning March 4th. So our administrative support team finished in first place. That is Kaya Schuet, Michelle Nolan and Rachel Lynch. Our advanced spreadsheet application, we had Michelle Nolan finish fourth place, which will get her into the state, state meet. In fundamental accounting, we had Michelle Nolan, Lorenzo Nord and Kaya Schuet. Again, all qualify for that state meet. In fundamental word processing, Kaya Schuet finished third and qualified. And then in intermediate word processing, Rachel Lynch finished in first place. So congratulations to that group of learners. Really excited for their opportunity next week to participate in the state meet. And who knows, they do well enough, they can qualify for nationals. We've had kids be able to do that before. Super, super exciting opportunity. Our math team finished up their season a week ago and they finished third in their last meet of the year. So this is, I think, either the third or fourth year of that team and they continue to grow. So exciting to see them have a really successful finish to their season. Congrats to Sophie Hart. She was named the FHS Athena Award winner. So that's kind of in our St. Paul area and they, they typically have a banquet, assuming that it's going to be virtual this year, but a great honor for Sophie. Congratulations to Emily Burghaus, who is the Region One. So that's our administrative region that Farmington's a part of, triple A award winner, which means she actually advances into the state pool and could be the state triple award, triple A award winner when they, when they announce those things. So that's a really, really cool honor for one of our, our learners to be able to not just be named from and represent Farmington High School, but now represent our region. So super excited to see what happens with Emily. We've been sharing and I know there's been a lot of news about vaccinations. So two weeks ago, we kind of have two different sources that we've been getting vaccinations from. One is directly through the state and one is through Dakota County. And it's been interesting trying to navigate two different systems at once and kind of keep track of things. But, you know, we'll take what we can get when we can get them. Last week Dakota County allotted us 360 appointments. Unfortunately, the weather that was to the south of us and around us impacted that a little bit. They had to cancel some appointments last Thursday and then this week. But we found out today that a majority of the people whose appointments got canceled were able to actually get in and maybe one or two days sooner. So we continue to work through that process with our staff. It, again, like I said, it's been a little bit hard keeping track, but we feel like at this point in time, we are right around 65 to 70% of our staff has had an opportunity to get, have an opportunity to get that vaccination, whether it's Dakota County or through MDE in the state. So that's progressing. We'll, we'll kind of see what happens with the next round, either through the state or Dakota County, depending on kind of the availability after some of the supply chains go out. So we're moving in the right direction with that. And then finally, shared with community last week that MDH and MDE updated their guidance for secondary school. Really kind of disconnected decision-making from the, the 14-day case rates that MDH has been using and provided some additional guidelines. And I know people are excited for the opportunity to return more of our learners into the secondary and just want to let people know that we're working on that. When we plan kind of our three learning models, we looked at obviously distance learning hybrid, which we've been in most of the time, and in-person learning. And we did a lot of our work around in-person learning. It had no restrictions around physical distancing. One of the things that MDH shared with us and MDE shared with us is that if your, your county numbers aren't below nine, you do have to maintain three feet of physical distancing in those secondary classrooms. So we are, our administrators are hard at work trying to figure out what that can look like, what rooms that might not be able to look, work in, how they're going to do those things, things lunch, stuff like that. So we continue to work on that and hopefully should have some more information about potential timelines later this week or early next week out into our community. Good news is around our COVID numbers, even though we don't have to base things on those MDH 14-day case rate numbers, they continue to go down. Our number last week was 29.65. Our real-time number is 21. And actually, when you look closer at it, we are approaching numbers that we were seeing in midsummer. The Dakota County positivity rate is the lowest it's been since they've been tracking on their website. So all things trending in the right direction. And now that we're reintroducing our, our secondary kids back into our buildings, we'll be able to track a little closer and see what that impact is. But we are working on plans with our staff and with our administrators to be able to reintroduce more kids at some point in time into our secondary buildings. Then finally, the other big change around that was tracking more along the influenza guidelines that we use at that 5% of staff and students out. And we've tracked that a little bit, but not as closely because it hasn't been a big metric. So beginning this week, we're going to start to pull that data and be able to track that over the next couple of weeks to see where things are. So all in all, lots of fun things to share about activities, good news in terms of learning models and things like that. Don't have all the answers right now. We're working on that. I know people want answers right now. It's, it's just going to take us a little bit because to be quite honest with you, we weren't ready for in-person learning and three feet of social distancing. So we have to get tape measures out and things like that to make sure we can do it. So that is all I have. Chair Saucer, thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to hear some of that encouraging news. All right. Up next is our student school board member update. Alicia, would you like to go first tonight?
Sure. So obviously our students are returning to the hybrid model, or at least some of us are. And I know a lot of my friends and myself included are very excited to go back to school. We're ready to get out of our rooms, out of our houses and just interact with the world at least 50% of the time. For our best buddies at Farmington, we did our February event recently where we met at the school this time and we could actually interact at a safe distance. And we are also planning a socially distant homecoming event for our members. So we can kind of get that feeling of normalcy again with homecoming. Austin Skoda, who is a senior this year, was named a national merit finalist. His PSAT was at the higher above the benchmark or the Minnesota benchmark. And so 1.5 million students enter and only 15,000 of them get to be awarded finalist. And so he has the potential to become a national merit scholarship winner. And yeah, congratulations to him.
All right, assuming Grace has some more to join to say, go ahead.
I do. I just want to piggyback off of what Alicia said on being back in the building. I've also heard from kind of my circle of friends and as well as people in the clubs that I'm in that everyone is liking being back. And although it's a little strange, it's been really awesome to be back in the building. And I also talked to my sister and a couple of the middle schoolers and they also said that from a middle school level, it was a little weird at first, but again, they're really happy to just be back and seeing their friends. So some definitely encouraging news there. Being a part of the speech team, we have started off with a few tournaments here and this past weekend was our home, was our home meet. And we as a team placed eighth and the weekend before that we placed fourth overall. So we very well on that front. And we are continuing to have virtual tournaments, but doing it best we can. And it's been really awesome to continue to do that activity. With student council, we are planning on, we are working to do some sort of homecoming and possible coronation, which is super exciting for seeing news because we're just trying to make it as normal as possible. So we're trying to work to do a super fun activity that is socially distanced and safe, which is really awesome as well. At the end of January there, and I'm not sure if I talked about this at the past meeting because it was a work session, but we did the winter blood drive for National Honor Society, which it was a super fun event that we got to be a part of. And there was a big turnout. So yeah, a lot of different events going on at the school and we're hoping to be able to bring to you more as we slowly get back into the building and see more and more events. But yeah, that's all we got for now.
All right. Appreciate the update on that speech tournament. Last one was home. So you didn't want to overachieve, but a home a tournament, right? All right. The next item of business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that could be acted upon with one motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the consent agenda and it will be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item that they would wish to discuss? Pulling the crowd here, not looking like anyone has one. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Carraro, second by, was it Doyle? Okay. Hard to tell. Roll call vote. Member Carraro?
Yes.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Member Christensen?
Yes.
Chair Saucer? Yes. Motion passes. We have a consent agenda approved. The next item is we're on reports and communications and the discussion is regarding the CEVE board committee assignment. And if I remember correctly, it's Castle Rock, Eureka, Empire and Farmington. Maybe I got the E's mixed up. Is there a order? All right. And this committee is, there is a board member that will serve on this committee and they're primarily responsible for helping with some of the roles with due days. And I asked the board if there was anyone that had interest and I did receive interest from Jaclyn. I haven't heard from anyone else unless there was anyone else that wanted to voice any, any opinion, any wish to serve on that committee tonight. I would like to hear that. All right. Seeing none, I appreciate Jaclyn's willingness to jump in and get her feet wet with due days. Hopefully it'll be dry and warm for due days this year and safe. So Jaclyn, I will appoint you to the CEVE committee.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you for your willingness to participate and help out. So now I'm looking for a motion to acknowledge receipt of reports and communications.
So moved.
Second. All right. Motion by Doyle, second by Carraro. Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Chair Saucer? Yes. Motion passes. We have a consent agenda approved. The next item is we're on reports and communications and the discussion is regarding the CEVE board committee assignment. And if I remember correctly, it's Castle Rock, Eureka, Empire and Farmington. Maybe I got the E's mixed up. Is there a order? All right. And this committee is, there is a board member that will serve on this committee and they're primarily responsible for helping with some of the roles with due days. And I asked the board if there was anyone that had interest and I did receive interest from Jaclyn. I haven't heard from anyone else unless there was anyone else that wanted to voice any, any opinion, any wish to serve on that committee tonight. I would like to hear that. All right. Seeing none, I appreciate Jaclyn's willingness to jump in and get her feet wet with due days. Hopefully it'll be dry and warm for due days this year and safe. So Jaclyn, I will appoint you to the CEVE committee.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you for your willingness to participate and help out. So now I'm looking for a motion to acknowledge receipt of reports and communications.
So moved.
Second. All right. Motion by Doyle, second by Carraro. Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Chair Saucer? Yes. Motion passes. We have a consent agenda approved. The next item is we're on reports and communications and the discussion is regarding the CEVE board committee assignment. And if I remember correctly, it's Castle Rock, Eureka, Empire and Farmington. Maybe I got the E's mixed up. Is there a order? All right. And this committee is, there is a board member that will serve on this committee and they're primarily responsible for helping with some of the roles with due days. And I asked the board if there was anyone that had interest and I did receive interest from Jaclyn. I haven't heard from anyone else unless there was anyone else that wanted to voice any, any opinion, any wish to serve on that committee tonight. I would like to hear that. All right. Seeing none, I appreciate Jaclyn's willingness to jump in and get her feet wet with due days. Hopefully it'll be dry and warm for due days this year and safe. So Jaclyn, I will appoint you to the CEVE committee.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you for your willingness to participate and help out. So now I'm looking for a motion to acknowledge receipt of reports and communications.
So moved. Second.
All right. Motion by Doyle, second by Carraro. Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Carraro?
Yes.
Chair Saucer? Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations, Jaclyn. All right. Next item of business under administrative action is the approval of the 2021-2022 budget assumptions and parameters with our financial director, Jane Hoska.
Thank you. Man, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Berg, I'm here to wrap up our first round of conversation as it relates to our budget parameters. Just a little update from the legislature. We're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed, that the Minnesota Department of Management and Budget on Friday is supposed to be releasing their February forecast. We did receive some communication, I think it was last week, that the revenues were outpacing the expenditures and the projections. So we're hoping that it's going to be good news. And it will help our budget moving forward. We're also in the next week, the first part of March, we're supposed to be hearing about our CARES II funding. Now, the little caveat with the CARES II funding, since the legislature is in session, they do have the ability to keep prolonging that as long as they would like. Now, if the legislature wasn't in session, within 20 days of the governor proposing the use of those funds, the legislature is supposed to get back. But since they are in session, they can take as much time as they want. So that is why it's taking a little longer for us to get our allocation and know how we can spend those funds. And so the one item that we had hanging out on our budget parameters was the, what we were going to use for enrollment for the 2021-22 school year. And after looking at it, we as an administration have landed on the 6950 for our enrollment for the FY22 school year. At this time, we would like to leave all other budget parameters as is until we get further along and have a better understanding what the legislature is going to propose for us in funding for the next biennium. Does anyone have any questions?
Hi, Jane.
Member Simmons, go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, Jane. Thanks. With the updated projections, does this factor in the survey that you mentioned during our work session that was going out to parents to assess if they thought they'd be re-enrolling their children in the upcoming school year?
No. At this time, what we know is that so far we've had 13 families, our kids respond that they are going to re-enroll their students back into the Farmington public schools. But we haven't taken that into consideration for our 6950.
Great. Thanks for clarifying.
Yes.
Is the 6950 the same number we had at the work session?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Just kind of adding to Hannah's question because I couldn't remember the exact number there. We had a very robust discussion about these parameters at our work session. Are there any other questions for Jane tonight before we go about the motion to approve? It looks awfully quiet. You did a great job last week, Jane. I appreciate your analogies that you used. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021-2022 budget assumptions and parameters as presented.
Second.
Motion by Carraro, second by Coletta. All in favor? I mean, roll call vote. Coletta? Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Carraro?
Yes.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Chair Saucer? Yes. Motion passes. We have approval of the budget assumptions and parameters for the next year. All right. The next item of business is the resolution discontinuing and reducing programs and positions with our, our, with Mary Ann Thomas.
Thank you.
That's not right.
Madam Chair, Board Members and Superintendent Berg, thank you. Now that you have approved the budget parameters for the 21-22 school year, we will start working with our, our administrators to start staffing their buildings. As part of that, we ask you to approve the resolution that's before you so that principals can staff their buildings, looking at various programs, classes, positions, expenditures. And in order to do that, we do need authorization for them to move forward with that staffing process. We'll be coming back to you on a number of occasions as we have in the past. But this is really just a routine item so that we can move forward and staff our positions based on the parameters you just approved. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? All right. I'm willing to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution discontinuing and/or reducing programs and positions as presented.
Second.
Motion by Carraro, second by Doyle. Roll call vote. Member Simmons?
Yes.
Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Carraro?
Yes.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Chair Saucer? Yes. Motion passes. Next item of business is the approval of the 2020-2022 Community Education Classroom Support Contract, once again with Mary Ann Thomas.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Board Members and Superintendent Berg. I would like to present with, to you tonight, the contract for the two-year period, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 22, for the community classroom support personnel represented by operating engineers local 70. This compensation parameters are within the board parameters that you established and authorized. There is a couple of unique things that we did negotiate in terms of language with this group that are worth mentioning. One, we did add a catastrophic sick leave bank. A number of other, our other groups have these and this group wanted to try it. So we did put it in a format of a memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding to see how it works out for us the next two years. We hopefully won't have to use it much because it is for catastrophic illnesses when all other leave is exhausted. But, but it's nice to be able to add this sick leave bank to the contract. The second thing is we did add a memorandum of understanding regarding staffing of non-school days. We have talked about non-school day staffing for as long as I have been in the school district and we try and try a number of different creative measures and none of them seem to work quite right. So we're really hoping that this program gets people who want to work on those non-school days, the opportunity to work, and also gives those people credit who really end up working year-round, a little bit of vacation, a little bit of holiday incentive. So we're kind of excited about this particular MOU that we've agreed to. Other than that, there really were no other changes to this contract. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have before you take action.
Appreciate the details in the notes you've given us in the presentation so far tonight. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number 70, non-certified classroom personnel and kid connection, We Tigers, stepping stones and ECFE programs for the contract period of July 1, 2020 to July 30, 2022 as presented.
Second.
June 30, 2022.
June 30. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. I have June 30, not July. June 30, 2022.
Second.
All right. I believe we had a motion by Carraro and I think, I think it was second by Doyle. And roll call vote. Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Carraro?
Yes.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Chair Saucer?
Yes. Motion passes. We've approved the UCIP, the Community Education Contract for the next couple of years. All right, we're on to the next item of business. It's the approval of the 2020-22 Nurses Contract, once again with Mary Ann Thomas.
All right, thank you again. So I'm happy to bring forward tonight the first contract with our building nurses, having just certified last June with the Bureau of Mediation Services as a union. So this was our first contract that, creating the contract from scratch, and Principal Busman and Director Kleckel assisted the school district in negotiating the nurses' contract. A couple of things I just want to highlight is, being the first contract, we did spend some time, although really moved forward quickly in a subcommittee format, to get the boilerplate language in there, things such as recognition, definitions, grievance language, rights of the parties, dues checkoff, discipline, seniority, those, those went really very quickly, and they don't have much, they're pretty similar to other contracts. It's kind of boilerplate most of the time, but so that we spent some time doing that. We also negotiated, of course, salary and longevity within the board parameters. We really focused on base wages, as we have done with this group, even when they weren't a union over the last few years, so that we can get a competitive base wage with this group, and so we can hire and retain nurses. So we did do that. We really didn't have any insurance changes right now. They're pretty similar to other support groups, and so we didn't, again, we focused our, our dollars that we did have available on base salary and not on things such as insurance. We did add one insurance caveat that is common in our other bargaining units. If two spouses work for the school district, and they're married to each other, combining their insurance contribution. Really no changes to the leave from what they had in the past. And we also added some language on hours of service, work year, and maintain some district flexibility on those. So overall, it was a really interesting process for me, having in my entire career never negotiated from scratch a brand-new union, so I was kind of excited about that. I don't know if anybody else was, but so it was, it was an interesting process, and I think it went very well, and I want to thank both parties for reaching this tentative agreement, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board members might have.
Thank you for all your detail.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. Mary Ann, Jason, thanks for your time today. I had a couple of questions, and I will tell you great details on the contract. So again, I appreciate spending time with me today on that.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment or question? All right, I believe I see none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Farmington Education Association, representing the nurses, for the contract period of July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Coletta, roll call vote.
Member Carraro?
Yes.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Member Christensen?
Yes.
Chair Saucer?
Yes, motion passes. The nurses have a new contract. Next item of business is the FHS Wrestling Room Moisture Mitigation Project with our, with Dan Miller.
All right, thank you, Chair Saucer, members of the board, Superintendent Berg. Thank you for giving me a chance here this evening to kind of walk through, again, another one of our many upcoming projects to get underway here for this spring, summer, and into next fall. So this particular project is kind of titled the Wrestling Room Moisture Mitigation Project. For all practical purposes, we'll kind of jump through here. Hoping everybody can see my screen, am I correct in that? Okay, perfect, thank you. So we've, we've had a recurring water issue in the wrestling room at the high school. For those of you that are not aware, that particular facility resides underground. So as you come in through the main student entrance on the east side of the building there, as you're walking across that sidewalk, you're actually walking on the ceiling, so to speak, of the wrestling room below it. And we've, we've had water leaking through that space here for a period of time. Unfortunately, the issue is becoming more frequent and more severe. The wrestling team has been very diligent and very helpful in trying to mitigate that by, you know, wiping up water that comes down the walls and begins to pool on the mats and the floor. But obviously, that's not a long-term solution. And with it getting worse, we're having more and more concern with water getting on or beneath the auxiliary gym floor, which is immediately adjacent to it, and literally just underneath the door. That could cause damage to the wood flooring. And we want to try to avoid that, if at all possible, because those particular types of repairs are extremely expensive. So kind of as an overview, we did do some investigative work with one of our engineering firms with Inspec that we've worked with in the past, projects related to this, kind of this nature. We did do a document review, kind of took a look at the existing conditions per all the architectural and structural design of the original building, tried to identify maybe some potential deficiencies or failures that might be causing the water to be able to penetrate into the space. We also then did kind of a destructive inspection in late August, which I'll show you some pictures here in a minute, but it is kind of what it sounds like, is we took some stuff apart without creating a significant amount of damage so that we could kind of get at what we thought was potentially causing the problem. And in that process, we discovered that, to the best of our ability, that we believe that some of the original waterproofing that is bonded to the panels that make up the exterior walls are, are not adhered properly or were not installed properly, and water can circumvent that waterproofing in several locations. Once behind that waterproofing, that water literally can flow down kind of in between a couple of spaces and reach the decking down below, and then flow through. Water has a wonderful ability to get into spaces wherein it is allowed to flow down. So our solution basically is to remove some of the existing concrete veneer panel that's on the walls there and some of the adjacent sidewalk. We need to install some new angle or kind of some flashing above the concrete there, waterproof over the top of that, reinstall the paneling, and then replace all of the sealant joints and possibly replace some expansion joint. We won't know that until we're actually kind of excavated and gotten down to see what the exact conditions are. To give you a little bit of an idea, so if you orient yourself here a little bit in this picture, to your right would be east, to the, to the left there would be to the west and the actual main entrance there for students. You can see the doors there. The main issues, sorry, it's a little bit hard to see, but if you look closely, there are some, kind of some red circles up there on the top right-hand corner. That is the exterior wall of the auxiliary gym. And those were kind of the, the primary points that we felt like we were getting that water penetration through those particular locations. This kind of give you some visual there, if you've walked in the entrance. The majority of it, we believe, is actually going down behind. There's a sill, sill plate there, and the water, we believe, is, is getting behind that sill plate and then getting down underneath the slab and making its way down into the, the walls below. In terms of schedule, obviously, here tonight, asking the board to take this project out to bid or quote. Want to differentiate here a little bit for the board. By state statute, this changed a number of years ago, but we have not changed our, our board practices in that it used to be state statute that any project above $100,000 had to be taken out for public bid. That was altered a number of years ago, and that amount was changed to $175,000. We still do have to get multiple quotes, but because the budget estimate for this project is, is less than $175,000, instead of taking it out for pure public bid, we are soliciting multiple quotes from kind of respected masonry contractors to do this work. So it's a little bit different. We won't be publishing, you know, things in the paper and so on and so forth, and opening bids. A little bit different process than that. But our intent is to begin soliciting quotes here early next month from those preferred contractors, and then early in April to identify a contractor and then bring that back to the board. We're, we're shooting for the 12th of April. We're trying to get these in and get contracts locked in as quickly as possible. And then to begin work on or after June 7, so that first week after students are out, and then to complete the project in July. Shouldn't be too detrimental to the, to the function of the building. We've discussed, you know, safety measures and fencing and so on and so forth, but because the high school has two kind of entrance areas there, we, we don't believe that there'll be any real significant impact to pedestrian traffic at that main entrance. And then from a construction cost estimate, we're anticipating right now that the, the construction cost on that project would be about $130,000. And just as a reminder, funding for this piece or this project would come from our long-term facilities dollars. And we get into that interesting part of the year where a lot of our projects are done over the summer, and our fiscal years end, end of June, and then start a new fiscal year beginning of July. So this project would be anticipated to be split about 50/50 from FY21, ending in June, and then FY22. Like I said, we hope to wrap this up in July, but that funding stream would come across two, two fiscal years. So with that, I would entertain any questions that board members might have.
Member Carraro, I see that your hand is up.
Yeah, I finally, finally figured out how to work that thing. Just raise your hand, so. And I do have a question. So Dana, when does, when does insurance kick in to cover something? I'm assuming it's a dollar amount, since it's less than X amount of dollars, it wouldn't kick in?
So, so the thing is, is that there would have to be, so this is, this is the catch-22. So we're, we're trying to avoid significant damage. So our, you know, in, in order for insurance to kick in, you know, we would have to exceed our, you know, $50,000. Why am I drawing a blank on it?
Deductible, I think.
Deductible, thank you. And so, you know, we're, we're trying to avoid that, if possible. So it's, it's kind of a catch-22. It would be, you know, similar, you know, in, in many regards to, you know, trying to fix a roof leak or something like that before it gets to the point where it does, you know, catastrophic damage. It's, you know, it, it's, it's, it is a bit, I mean, it is a bit unfortunate that it would appear anyway, based upon our, our, you know, our best efforts to, you know, kind of get in there and evaluate, you know, the way it was supposed to be built and the way that it actually was constructed. And, you know, unfortunately, if a few little minor tweaks in terms of that, the detail on the construction that wasn't done the way it should have been done, that we're having to, you know, go in after the fact and, and try to fix it. But like I said, it is getting worse, and, you know, to have to go in and wait until it becomes catastrophic and does significant damage on a, on a wood gym floor, you know, at that point in time, we all know that we're you know, unfortunate, looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars to replace a, a gym floor as well, so.
Thank you, Deanna.
I thought I saw another.
I know you had your hand up, but it went down. Is this, do you wish to comment or question?
Actually, I had the same question that Steve did about insurance, but thank you.
Great minds think alike. All right, Member Simmons, I mean Simmons, sorry, Simmons, go ahead.
Thanks, Dan. And you answered the first part of my question, which was around if the construction wasn't done the way it should have been, or if there was a code change, or if it was just due to age. So thanks for preemptively answering that. Is there any liability on the original construction company, or just is, is what it is at this point?
Without rehashing, because I was not a part of it, but basically everything with the original part of the building, when the district settled previous lawsuit types of things, at that point in time, it was part of the settlement that everything that is, is now our responsibility.
Thanks for clarifying. I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions? All right. I appreciate your, your presentation, because every question I had was answered when we went through it, so that was well done. Do we need to approve this? Yes. Okay. Is there, I will, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
I will make a motion. Go ahead, Hannah.
I'll make a motion to grant administration in conjunction with Inspec permission to create and issue a bid proposal for the Farmington High School Wrestling Room Moisture Mitigation Project as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Simmons, second by Coletta. Roll call vote, please.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Carraro?
Yes.
Chair Saucer?
Yes. Motion passes. We have approved the bid process. All right, the next item of business is Item F. It's the School Board Meeting Format Time Change Discussion. So just to recap, the community, last, at our last work session, there were a couple ideas from board members to switch up how we do a board meetings, just a little bit, especially our work sessions. The first proposal was to move our work sessions to an earlier timeframe to allow for a more robust discussion. And within discussion of the board, we settled on just talking about approving a 6:00 PM start time. And within that discussion, we wanted to be consistent so that all meetings would be at the same time. So that was one item that we were going to present today, was to have further board meetings from now on after this meeting to all start at 6:00. So the work sessions and regular board meetings, as well as, there was a request from a member to have all of our work sessions video recorded, because previously we're just audio recording. And there was much interest in the board for that, so that was kind of what the proposal was going to be. Tonight was going to ask the board to approve the having all of our future work sessions and board meetings at 6:00 PM, as well as all meetings of the board, work sessions, and business meetings to be video recorded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve starting all school board meetings at 6:00 PM and video recording all work sessions and regular business meetings.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Carraro. Roll call vote, please.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Carraro?
Yes.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Chair Saucer?
Yes, motion passes. We will be now doing all of our meetings at 6:00 PM, audio and video recorded. So stay tuned and remember to switch your alarms back. It's a little bit early. Yes, motion passes. We will be now doing all of our meetings at 6:00 PM, audio and video recorded, so stay tuned and remember to switch your alarms back a little bit earlier. All right, now we are on to the board remarks. Let's see, let's start with, how about member Carrero? Why don't you go ahead?
Well, our student school board members actually captured everything as well as Jason. The one big thing I wanted to mention was Austin Skoda, so I think that was a great achievement there. Also, one thing that I did notice was we have three athletes from the dance team that were selected to the Farmington Class 3A for all states, which was fantastic, congratulations to them. And again, to all our teachers and staff members out there, thank you for all the hard work you're putting in and, and getting the kids back into school, so just greatly appreciate that. That's all I have.
All right, member Doyle, how about you next?
I'll just echo the same sentiment as Steve, I'm just really excited that all kids are back in the building and I appreciate all the hard work that the teachers are doing and thank you to Mary Ann for all of her negotiating with the contracts and all the upcoming stuff. Yeah, that's all I have tonight.
Member Coletta, go ahead.
Once again, congratulations to all of our amazing students and their successes these past couple of weeks. Thanks to the district office and all the teachers for getting our kids into school. It was really great to see all the laughter outside this morning as kids were heading out, which I haven't heard for a long time as they were getting in cars to go to school, so that was exciting. Congratulations, Mary Ann, on your first major contract negotiation through and through. And happy Board Members Appreciation Week to all my fellow board members. I look forward to a very productive 2021 with you.
All right, we'll let the student board members go ahead as well. Grace, do you have anything extra to add tonight?
I just want to say that I'm super excited to be back in the building this week, so thank you to all administration and staff for helping us to get back as smoothly as possible.
Excellent, and Alyssa, Alicia?
I have the same sentiment as Grace, I'm really excited to come back and I know that there's still a lot to do and it won't be normal for a while, but the small steps that we're taking, I really appreciate, and I know a lot of my own friends and the student body are also very appreciative of, too.
Excellent, it was great hearing from you guys. All right, Kyle, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, sure, I mean, y'all said mostly what I would say, and again, I'm excited to see the kids back too, and, and mostly Grace and Alicia, it's great to hear your perspective. It's one thing for me to think all the kids are excited to go back, because I've got a couple who are, but it's good to hear that reinforced both through your own experiences and you sharing, you know, what your, what your friends are thinking too. And one thing that, yeah, in terms of the planning and preparation, Jason and in, in, in all of your team, one thing I really am starting to have an appreciation for is just how difficult it must be for you to continue to measure space in rooms and deal with ever-shifting guidelines from the state. And hopefully, next time they, they announce something new, it's, it's not another round, I mean, I'd like to see the, the planning and all the work that you're doing. You know, I guess I had hoped that when we brought kids back into school, it'd be just as simple as hitting reverse on the, we took the kids out of the, out of the schools, but obviously it's not that simple, so thank you for your dedication, it's, it's huge, so that's it.
All right, Hannah, go ahead.
Well, thanks to everyone for the great discussion at our work session and for all of the administration and staff who presented tonight, it was really great information and, and I appreciate that. And I, to echo what Kyle said, I, I just continue to be really, really thankful for our district's educators and our administrators and our staff all around. You know, when I talk to families in other districts whose kids still have not set foot in a classroom since last March, it, it's hard to hear and I, I just cannot, I just don't think that the willingness of our administration and educators to continue to adapt and with such a positive attitude just cannot be understated, so thank you all for continuing to do that. I'm so grateful, I'm so excited to see more students back in the classroom. And I love all the pictures, I just really am grateful to be a part of this, this board and, and the, and the work that's happening in our district. And Grace and Alicia, thanks for your updates too. Grace, I, I really appreciated your update about the blood drive and wanted to share that, you know, I think it's so, so impactful and, and often you might not have a chance to meet somebody who's been on the life-saving end of that, but I have been the benefit of having my life saved because of blood donors, so I just want to send a personal thank you to all of the students who donated and, and continue to do that because it's such an important cause and I'm really grateful for that. Thanks, everyone.
All right, I've got a couple of things to add for my closing remarks. In, in contrast, not only is it School Board Member Appreciation Week, but it's School Bus Driver Appreciation Week this week as well. And I had a very happy Girl Scout help deliver Girl Scout cookies to Marshall Alliance today. And I know personally that each driver is going to be able to get Girl Scout cookies with a special appreciation program or something this week. So I know as everything has had to be modified, have our teachers had to modify, I know our bus drivers had to modify things from the routes changing to the measuring to close to the assigned seats, to the non-assigned seats, and that whole piece this year, from earlier this year when they were delivering assignments and launches and every task that our bus drivers have taken on, please say thanks to your bus drivers this week as well, because they have had a lot of work to do as well on top of the cold weather and just the normal bus driver things that we appreciate, so I just wanted to mention that. Also, I believe it was last week, I was able to participate and watch some of our students that are in the MinCaps program present their projects. And there were quite a few all at one time, so it was hard to be able to kind of zoom between the different programs, but I did listen to one group that worked with marketing with the Timberwolves, and it was really interesting to see how they were trying to figure out ways to create more engagement with the audience, to get more people to come to games and what to do, and they were actually working with plans with the Timberwolves on what they could do to engage their, their, their fans. And it was just neat to see that we have programs where students can work with real companies and create business marketing plans for real-world solutions. So it's just neat to see that program, if you ever have opportunity to drop in, whether it's virtually or in person, following, following this time period, I encourage you to just drop in at MinCaps, because I'm always impressed by what our students do and produce, and some of them are from us and some of them from Prior Lake, but it's just great to see it all. And also of note, this last month, I lost track of the time, but our band was honored to be the band that was showcased at the Music Educators Conference. And I just recall back to the first time we had student members, board members on our board, and it was Andrew Lepowski and he was at the MSBA conference and he saw the bands there and he was so thrilled and so excited and really wanted to get the Farmington Band on the MSBA stage, then to hear that now the band was able to be on the stage of the Music Educator Conference amongst their peers, and that's just what a highlight and what an honor. So thank you to all of the band directors, as well as those parents that have helped truck them into practices and lessons, and especially through this pandemic piece. So it's great to see the joys of music in our district and the hard work that has paid off. With that, I can close my remarks and the board will, we will be going into closed session and the only action that will take place after coming out of the closed session will be to adjourn. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to closed session at 7:25 PM pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D-03 to discuss labor negotiation strategy.
Motion by Carrero, second by Doyle, roll call vote, please.
Member Simmons?
Yes.
Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Carrero?
Yes.
Member Doyle?
Yes.
Member Coletta?
Yes.
Chair Saucer?
Yes, motion passes, we will move to closed session.
All right, so just give us one little second for.